Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, Chair Daniel Kater.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to call the order of the June 20th, 2019 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Kater.
Here.
Commissioner Coleman.
Here.
Commissioner Bell.
Here.
Commissioner Bowers.
Here.
Commissioner Lomis.
Here.
Commissioner Rudnick.
Here.
Commissioner Wade.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for attending tonight's Planning Commission Meeting. This commission provides an opportunity for public participation in the development process throughout the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission considers a wide variety of projects, including subdivision maps, zone changes, general plan amendments, and much more. When applications are received, the City Planning Division analyzes the request. Planning staff will present the facts about the project along with their recommendation to the commission, who will approve the item or make a recommendation as appropriate. Our goal is to carefully consider each item and make a decision that will balance individual rights with public welfare and the general well-being of our community. We will now receive public statements. This time is reserved for anyone wishing to address the commission on a matter not on the public hearing portion of the agenda. If you are here on items 5A through 5F, this is not the time to speak. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission? If so, please come forward and state your name. Seeing no one coming forward, we will now move on to the Consent Calendar Non-Public Hearing Items. These agenda items typically involve housekeeping or administrative matters that do not require a public hearing. Does any commissioner wish to remove a Consent Calendar Non-Public Hearing Item for separate If not, may I have a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on Consent Calendar Non-Public Hearing Item 4A?
I'll make that motion.
Commissioner Wade, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Rudnick. Okay. All right. Motion approved.
Motion approved.
Thank you. We will now move on to Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items. The next agenda section includes public hearing items that are considered routine or non-controversial. These items have been reviewed by staff and are conditioned in accordance with the requirements of the municipal code. The planning director will read each of the items on the consent calendar to ensure that the public has an understanding of all items to be considered. If you would like to speak on an item, please come forward after the items are read and ask that that item be removed for discussion. If no items are removed by a member of the public or a commissioner, the commission will vote on all items together in one motion without further comment. Mr. Coyle, will you please read the items on tonight's Consent Calendar Public Hearing?
Yes, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. Project 5A is an extension of time for vesting tentative tract map 6459, a proposal to approve three more years to develop this project consisting of 57 lots on 11.18 acres for single-family residential development, generally located north of Nile Street and west of Park Drive. Project 5B is an extension of time for vesting tentative tract map 7213, which is a proposal to approve three more years to develop this project consisting of 158 single-family residential lots on 35.7 acres for single-family residential development, located at the southeast corner of Berkshire Road and Ash Road. Project 5C, vesting tentative tract map 7352, which is a proposal to subdivide 7.26 acres into 26 single-family residential lots located west of the intersection of Stein Road and Poppy Seed Street. Project 5D is tentative parcel map 12286, which is a proposal to subdivide .86 acres into four parcels and one designated remainder, located approximately 1/4 mile west of the intersection of South H Street and Plans Road. Project 5E, Plan Development Review Number 18-0456, a request to allow development of a commercial center in the regional commercial planned commercial development zone district located at the southeast corner of Hosking Avenue and South H Street. This project was continued from our June 6 meeting. And finally, Project 5F, Plan Development Review Number 19-0141, which is a request to allow development of 81 multiple-family dwelling units in the Multiple Family Dwelling Planned Unit Development Zone District located at 3345 Bernard Street. This project was also continued from our June 6 meeting. That concludes my reading of tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. At this time, I will open all Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on a Consent Calendar Public Hearing Item? Again, this is not the time to take testimony, just request that the item be moved to the public hearing portion of the agenda. Seeing no members of the audience wishing to move an item, does any commissioner wish to remove a Consent Calendar Public Hearing Item? Seeing no commissioners, speak now. Commissioner Coleman, there you go. Okay. Your hand was close. At this time, the public hearing on all Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items not removed, which is all of them, is now closed. May I get a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on the Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items 5A through 5F?
I make that motion for 5A through 5F.
Thank you, Commissioner Bell.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Coleman. This is Vince. I think we're like 0 for 8 at this time. Can we call for a verbal? I believe the motion is passed, and we can all thank Commissioner Lomis for the 15 additional minutes of this meeting. Seeing as how we have no...
Can we just reflect that it would be 7-0? Is that what the correct vote would be?
Yes, it would. And we have a faulty iPad here.
We'll talk to IT afterwards.
Can we have the meetings reflect that Commissioner Lomis delayed the vote and created some confusion? Okay. Thank you. Yeah. Seeing as how we have no public hearings this evening, we will move on to workshops. And we have a workshop presented by Mr. Coyle.
Well, thank you for giving me the credit, Mr. Chair, but I will not be giving the presentation tonight. I have a much easier job, and that is to introduce Ms. Nina Carter, who was recently appointed as the Community Development Coordinator in the Department of Development Services. Hayward Cox is retiring, and while Hayward is irreplaceable, Nina is a fantastic person to step into the job. And Nina would like to introduce our consultant, who will give tonight's presentation.
Good evening, commissioners. I'd like to introduce Diana Alrod with LaSar Development Consultants. She's working on our 2020-25 Consolidated Plan. She's going to talk about the process and do this workshop.
Good evening, and thank you for your attention. I've been here all week conducting a variety of community engagement activities, and I'll share a little bit more about what that included as we move along. The agenda for this evening is pretty straightforward, going to explain a little bit about what the consolidated plan is, what is the assessment of fair housing, give some background on the community profile that we're looking at, share a bit about our community outreach, and explain where we are in the process. The consolidated plan is essentially an application that a jurisdiction sends to HUD in Washington that says, "This is how we're going to use the federal money that you're going to give us for a variety of housing and community development needs." And it includes the four main HUD entitlement programs, which include HAPWA, CDBG, Emergency Solutions Grant, and the Home Investment Partnership Program. These programs work together to provide a variety of services and funds for the development of affordable housing, services to folks who are in the vulnerable populations, et cetera, people who are homeless, et cetera. And the whole goal of this is to provide funding for projects and activities that address the needs of lower-income households. Over the next five years, we estimate that the city will receive about $30 million in federal funds for these purposes. We don't actually know exactly how much we'll get, but we do know that it's about this amount of money. Every year, it's slightly different what the allocation will be. The companion document to the consolidated plan is something called the Assessment of Fair Housing, and it basically tracks the city's efforts to address impediments to fair housing. This could include housing discrimination against people of color, or by income, both private practices and public policies that may hinder the ability of people to find housing. So that will be submitted at the same time as the consolidated plan, although it's not as rigorously required in order to receive funding. It's important, but it's an ancillary document. We've been talking all week with community members in a variety of activities about some of the statistics facing the community, and I think part of the main thing that has been a big takeaway for me is almost 30% of the total population in Bakersfield is low-income or lower-income. It always comes up, what does that actually mean? Granted, a single person earning $10.25 an hour is not even making minimum wage, but they are considered extremely low-income, and the yellow highlights show the income limits for these three bullet points that I'm explaining. A person who makes $12 minimum wage is still very low-income and can't afford a lot of the things that people with higher incomes can. A family of three with a stay-at-home parent and a baby with a spouse who earns just $14 an hour perhaps at some fast-food restaurant is very low-income. And a family of four that earns a total of $52,000 or thereabouts is considered low-income. So these are not insignificant amounts of money that people are earning and can't get services or housing that they need. The economic landscape is something we also look at in the consolidated plan. It's important to note that Bakersfield has a lot of challenges that other areas of the state don't have. The employment rate is over 10% in Bakersfield proper, which is about three times what it is statewide. The poverty rate is very high at 19%, 19-plus percent. What makes this particular number so important to look at is that a family who's at poverty level in California at $25,000 or so a year is on par with a family in Indiana or Illinois that makes $25,000 a year. So this is a national standard, which means the poverty rate is quite high for the state for in the state of California generally, but also nationally. Average rents right now are about $978 a month, which sounds to me, being from the Bay Area, like heaven, except the person that earns $12 an hour can't afford it. Household income of $40,000 is required to afford this average rent or thereabouts. 43% of your population are renters, and right now, there are over 7,000 people waiting for rental assistance on the Housing Authority's waitlist, which has been closed for eight years, and after a discussion the other day with their ED, it's probably going to remain closed for another four years. So that's 12 years plus for people to find housing on that waitlist. The median home value in the city is relatively low. It's $241,000, but again, most lower-income households can't even afford that, especially not when they need to come up with a down payment. So between these two statistics, we learn that the housing cost burden is 39% of all households have a housing cost burden. That means that they're paying more than 30% and sometimes more than 50% of their income for housing costs. Housing is considered affordable if a renter only pays about 30% of their gross income for housing costs. And as I'm sure you know, homelessness is a big concern, not just in Bakersfield and not just in California. It's now become a national issue. The 2019 Kern County Point in Time Count found a 50% increase in homelessness from the year before. And while some of that probably is better documentation and counting of people, we know that for a fact that a goodly percentage of that is by outright growth in homeless population. About 1,000 are located in metropolitan Bakersfield. 16% were homeless families with children, and 11% of the total count, this is countywide, were children. That is, homeless people, homeless children by themselves under the age of 18. We also look at public health data when we do this, our analysis for the consolidated plan. We look at HIV and AIDS trends in the community. According to the Kern County Public Health Department or Health Services Department, basically 13.5% of the population is exposed to unsafe drinking water, and food insecurity is a real issue. And 88, they found that 88.4% of students are eligible for free or reduced-price meals, specifically lunches. That's a huge percentage. In previous years, in previous cycles of the consolidated plan, the city has prioritized a lot of projects through the Capital Improvement Program, which includes things, as you know, street construction and maintenance, sidewalks, curbs, gutters, and so forth. But the data from our surveys and input from the various community forums may help the city decide that it wants to change how it approaches using these federal funds. I mentioned before that we've done a lot of community outreach this week. We've started with an online survey, which has been on the city's webpage since about the beginning of May or middle of May, and we will probably close it in mid-July. There have been over, I think, over 200 responses to that, trying to find a lot of ways to get community feedback. We've had three community workshops, which were open workshops for people, anyone who wanted to attend. There was one on the 17th, 18th, and 19th this week. In addition, we had four focus groups from stakeholders with particular interest in a topic. For example, we had developer-type folks come on for one day. We had homeless service providers on another day. So there were four of those groups, and then we had one-on-one interviews with some of the key stakeholders, including county agency officials, the Housing Authority, behavioral health, all to get information on the needs facing the community. Obviously, today, we have our presentation with you, and then from this, it seems like a long time away, but we have to, the law requires us that we come and get as much needs data as we can first before we start drafting the actual plan. So all the work that we've done this week and the survey will help inform, as we go forward, what we need to create as the new goals for the consolidated plan. And just as a reflection from the previous iteration, those five items on your screen with decent accessible and affordable housing, community and economic development, public infrastructures, and so forth are the, were the five top priorities. And my guess is that typically, we see the same kinds of priorities, but one may be the, a new one may be the number-one priority facing the community. Just depends on the reflection of the materials that we have, the community input, and so forth. Just as an explanation of some of the past projects, we were able to show the senior center folks that their senior center was partly funded by CDBG. And then a home project, which is a new construction or rehab project, the Green Gardens, was a project undertaken by a developer with a home program. This is a laundry list of all sorts of things that have happened in the past. I'm not going to go through them because they're, it's just, you know, a list. But I did want to share with you the timeline sort of more fully. We're going to complete our community outreach in July. We hope to have some goals moving forward to start discussing in August. Once we have confirmation that these are the right goals by how we vet them through the community, then we're going to really draft the documents that we need. And then from that, we will produce reports that will identify not only action items, but also a one-year plan of how the next year's money will be spent. The public comment period will occur sometime in February or March with a public hearing before the city council in April. This document is due in every jurisdiction. I'm doing seven consolidated plans right now, and they're all due on May 15, 2020. So we have a lot of work to do. And that is all I have to present. We're happy to answer any questions you may have. This is just an opportunity for you to share any sort of thoughts about the material that we provided. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Are there any commissioner questions? Commissioner Rudnick?
Thank you for the presentation. It's quite eye-opening to see the percentage of low-income and et cetera folks in the area. When you live here, you probably don't see it as much as the statistics tell you. It looks like we're doing some good things for the homeless, et cetera, from what we've heard before, and obviously, with this document, we can plan for further great things to happen. And thank you. It's very good.
Thank you. Commissioner Coleman?
Thank you. Yeah, I want to reiterate Mr. Rudnick's comment. Thank you very much for this very nice presentation. I have a question about the 80, I'm sorry, the $30 million that we'll get over that five-year period of time. How is that determined?
These are allocations, well, each program is a formula allocation based on what the total pool of funding is by HUD. I'm going to get back to that page. And then they use a formula allocation for, that's based on poverty rates, a high-cost area is a whole different, the age of housing stock, it's for CDBG is quite elaborate, and then they parcel up that pie by jurisdiction. Any jurisdiction over 50,000 people is an entitlement jurisdiction that will receive some combination of, some of these funds or all these funds, depending upon how big the community is. But these are funds that are a formula allocation.
Because my concern is, is that, you know, we have a relatively low population compared to other cities in the state, but we have a higher percentage of people in that poverty level than some may. And so is there some index that kicks in that...
They actually, for CDBG, I've been involved with efforts in the past to try to change the formula allocation, and it's basically a Byzantine process that, well, it takes an act of Congress, and it's not something that Congress has wanted to change. The part that I think is, I can't really describe it as a benefit per se, I guess it is, but because you have a high poverty rate, you're going to receive more money because of that. And, you know, there are parts of the housing stock that are quite old, and so that's a benefit as well. But unfortunately, that's the way the allocations happen, by a formula.
Are the CDBG funds, are they the only ones that are discretionary? In other words, the city council has some discretion on? Because the rest of them are basically help either rent or buy homes, right?
Well, CDBG has a number of pockets to which a jurisdiction can fund. For example, it can do public services, for example, helping, paying for operation of a senior center or something like that. There's a cap on each one of those sectors, like the public service cap, only 15% of your money can go towards public services. CDBG can also be used for other, like improvements, including economic development stuff. It's a broader range of things, but there are very prescribed rules about how it's used and how you prove that you're serving the lower-income population. It's either a presumed benefit that the people going to this place are going to be low-income, or it's actually in a qualified census tract. So there are a lot of requirements for each one of them that are, make it very difficult to stray beyond what HUD says this is what you can use the money for.
Thank you.
Is that accurate?
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you. Seeing no other commissioners wishing to speak, I'd just like to reiterate, thank you so much for the presentation. Quickly, I just had a question. So you're at the, this is sort of, sorry, and we don't have the presentation, so I'm trying to remember some of the slides, but you've gone through, you know, numerous community outreach and engagement, and I guess, as this is sort of a public forum, I mean, have you found, is it too early to kind of state findings as far as what, you know, what you're finding based on community input?
It's a little bit early for that, but I can tell you that there has been a lot of discussion about homelessness, that yes, we know we need more affordable housing, but how can we address homelessness right now, or how can we prevent homelessness from happening? Some people are just a paycheck or less away from being on the streets, and so we've heard that a lot. We always hear from people who have a vested interest in one topic, like, "I want another senior center," or something like that. But in terms of the kind of general flavor, we've heard a lot about the concerns about homelessness and a real sincere desire for people to seek meaningful thought on how can we help these people. So it's been really, it's been quite inspiring, actually.
Thank you. And it's inspiring to see that we're constantly looking for what's the right use of these funds and that that might change over time. So thank you for presenting that. And seeing no other commissioner comments, I will say thank you so much.
Thank you.
And move on to communications.
Can we get a motion to receive and file?
Oh, yes. And I will, before moving on to communications, ask for a motion to receive and file.
I move to receive and file.
Thank you. Commissioner Rudnick, may I have a second? Commissioner Lomis? Commissioners, please cast your votes.
There you go.
Oh, it's behind steps.
We're going to get it right someday.
Don't open more than one.
But not today.
Don't read anything.
Thank you.
Motion passes.
Woo-hoo. Now, we will move on to communications. Mr. Coyle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My only announcement tonight is that the next meeting of the Planning
Don't read anything.
Thank you.
Motion passes.
Woo-hoo. Now, we will move on to communications. Mr. Coyle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My only announcement tonight is that the next meeting of the planning commission will be Thursday, July 18th, and I would like to wish the commission a very safe and happy July 4th, which is also a Thursday, the first Thursday of the month, but we will not be having a commission meeting that night. Thank you.
Don't show up. None of us will be here. All right. Thank you. Moving on to commissioner comments. Are there any commissioner comments? Seeing none, I will just extend to city staff, have a happy 4th as well, and we'll see you on the 18th. And I will adjourn the meeting at 6 o'clock on the dot. Thank you.[1708.89]